All right, good evening, everybody. Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the City Council. Uh, will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Visualize the flag right there. There we go, oh, there we go, thank you, Terry. All right, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the- All right, thank you. But let's go ahead and have roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici will be noted as absent this evening. Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor No?
Here.
Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
All right, so moving to item three, and I know why we have a full house today, is our ceremonial matters in item 3.1, uh, which is a proclamation recognizing Ray Bosnicz for 38 years of service with the Placerville Police Department. So I'm gonna go ahead, Chief, do you want to say anything first, or do you want me to go ahead and start with the resolution?
Please, Mayor, if you would, and then I know there's a couple of members of the audience that would like to speak.
Absolutely. Oh, yes, of course. All right, sounds good. Well, I'm gonna go ahead then and, uh, read Ray's proclamation here. So again, "A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville, recognizing Ray Bosnicz for 38 years of service with the Placerville Police Department. Whereas Ray Bosnicz began his service to the City of Placerville, July 22nd, 1979, when he was hired as a police officer of the Placerville Police Department. And whereas Ray has previously served as a deputy sheriff in Marin County from 1968 to 1969, and a San Francisco police officer from 1969 to 1979. And whereas before his law enforcement career, Ray had served in the United States Army from 1965 to 69, to include service in the Republic of Vietnam. And whereas while employed in Placerville, Ray quickly gained the confidence and respect of the department and community. Ray was promoted to detective on July 1st, 1984, and on November 16th, 1984, Ray was promoted to sergeant, a rank he held until his honorable retirement as a full-time officer in October of 2021. And whereas Ray, who still had a desire to continue to serve his community, returned to work part-time for the Placerville PD on July, in July of 2007, as a police services assistant, working in the front office assisting with records and fingerprinting. And whereas Ray has touched countless lives and is a beloved member of the Placerville Police Department for nearly four decades. And whereas Ray is retiring from the City of Placerville after working 16 years as a police service assistant and 22 years as a full-time officer totaling 38 years of service to the community of Placerville. Now therefore, I, Michael Saragosa, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Placerville, State of California, urge all citizens to join me in recognizing Ray Bosnicz for his tireless and meaningful service to our community, extending our appreciation for the 38 years of public service, and further extending our best wishes in all his future endeavors dated today." So thank you again, Ray, congratulations.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your support. Thank them all for their support. Although I think some of them are here just to make sure. That remains to be seen. And thank you to my wife for her support. Pardon me for that. Well, you pretty much covered my career, the one thing you left out was, uh, that right after high school, I was a firefighter. So, I've, uh, done a little bit of everything. I, like, like I said, I've been a firefighter, soldier, deputy sheriff, police officer in two different, uh, departments. Uh, the first department, of course, was San Francisco, and I thought, wow, it's gonna be cool to work where all the action is, but that gets kinda tiring after a bit. And in a large department like San Francisco, there's not really a whole lot you can do to make a difference as one individual officer. So when I came here, uh, I'm sure there were a few people, and now, he's like everybody else that comes here from a big city, he's gonna be here, and he'll probably be gone in a short period of time. Well, after I worked here for a couple of years, I really began to enjoy it, and I thought, you know, I might be able to make a difference here. So, uh, I continued working here, and then at some point, I thought, you know, it'd be cool to be the longest-tenured police officer to ever work here. Well, I didn't quite make that, I got kicked to the curb, as most of you know, with a, with a heart attack in, in 2000. And, uh, I couldn't stay on the sidelines for very long, I stayed on as a S.H.I.E.L.D. volunteer for a while, and then came back on as a records person. So, the next thing was to do was be the longest-tenured person in the police department, period. And I think I've achieved that goal. But, uh, in all of that time, uh, and I'll close with this, I hope that I've made a difference here. I think I did, in some ways, and, uh, like I said, whether I stay gone remains to be seen. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you, Ray. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for any, I think maybe some colleagues might have some comments.
Yes, I believe so, and, and just real quick, Ray, we left the firefighter part off on purpose. Did have to bring that up. Ray truly is one of a kind, and I'm thankful, um, uh, that we crossed paths at, at the time of, of my life and career that we did. Ray has touched lives, he's touched mine, he's touched my, um, uh, ability to, um, kind of have perspective on, on certain things, mostly what's important and what's not. So, he will be missed. Again, I'm thankful he's one of a kind because my limited leadership ability can't handle more than just one of him, so, um, he's been great. I know he's not gonna be gone-gone, we won't let him. He can co-, I told him he can come back Monday through Friday, I just can't pay him at that point. I don't think he'll, uh, he'll take me up on that, but, uh, thank you, Ray, and I would invite anybody from the department that wants to come up and say a few words, to, to please do.
I wrote something down, so hopefully I'm a little, little bit better right now. Um, thank you, uh, members of the council, members of the audience, I'm about to tell a story. I would like to tell you the story about the first time I had an interaction with the Placerville Police Department. Please know that this story I'm about to tell you is well past the statute of limitations. I'm gonna take you back in, in time, the year was either 1995 or 1996. Some friends and I, who might have been under the age of 21, had scored some beer, and we found what we thought was a remote location in the city to hang out. Now, full disclosure, I was the designated driver. As we were hanging out, we saw a set of headlights coming our way. We all immediately knew the jig was up, and it was a police car. One of my friends got the brilliant idea to run into the bushes, and he took leg bail, while the others, myself included, tossed beer cans in a feeble attempt to hide the evidence. Out of the car stepped this monstrous police officer, and, um, calmly walked over to us and asked what we were up to. Ray must have used some of his police officer magic because we all, uh, quickly came clean, and, um, it may have even leaked that one of them ran into the bushes. Ray laughed, um, as you guys can imagine that, big laugh of his, that the guy ran away, and I assumed that was because, um, he never intended to bust us. He understood that even though we were up to no good, we were just kids hanging out, uh, not really bothering anybody. I can't believe I did. What the heck is going on here? Uh, Ray gave us a stern warning, he took our beer, and he sent us away. One question I always wanted to know, what happened to that beer? Okay. I'll always remember this day because it was the first time I had an interaction with the Placerville Police, or with a police officer. Now, we're gonna fast forward to September 2020, 20, September 2002. Uh, this is when I got my opportunity and I was hired here at the police department, my dream job. I was an officer for about five years, went on a fateful July day in 2007, Ray Bosnicz walked in. I was mortified. Uh, this was literally one of the first times I'd see Ray since the one and only contact with him. My God, what is wrong with me? This is insane. Well, I needed. I eventually worked up the courage to tell Ray the story, and we had a good laugh. Ray even told me he remembered that night, which after years of hearing his stories from San Francisco PD, I never doubted it. Here's where it's gonna be a hard, Ray. I'm kind of embarrassed right now, um, what that day really meant to me. I was a kid. You were the first impression I had of a Placerville police officer. You were kind, professional, and empathized with us kids, just trying to have a good time. This is the kind of officer that I always tried to be. Over the next several years, I built a friendship with you, one that I will always cherish. You tell the best jokes, the best stories, and I've learned so much from you, and I will never forget it. If I can pass along half of your knowledge to another young officer, that officer would be lucky. Thank you for your years of dedication to the City of Placerville.
And anybody else, it's a tough act to follow, I know, but if anyone else would like to come up and speak? All right. All right, well, Ray, again, thank you again for your 38 years of service, as well as for your service to this country during the Vietnam War. Um, you know, my dad was actually there at the same time you were there, so, uh, thank you again for that service. Uh, you will be missed, but as the chief said, Monday through Friday, anytime you wanna come in, you're more than welcome to, and you're always have a, Placerville will always be your home at the PD, so, and thank you for that service, and I'll open it up to any of my colleagues.
I, I don't think I can follow that testimony, but it, it really goes to show your character for everyone who doesn't know you and the job that you did, and just really wanna thank you for all your service, it's really incredible. Thank you.
All right. All right, well, again, thank you, Ray, and again, I know, we have a big group, but as you all know, you don't have to stick around. Y'all have other things to do, so, again, thank you for being here for your colleague, and we really appreciate it. All right. Well, and actually, maybe we can get a, a couple of pictures with Ray and all the, the police force, I think that would be nice, right here in front. Okay, we will go ahead and move along with, uh, the rest of the agenda. Now, I just feel like so happy, I just ended right there, that was, that was great. Um, all right, item four, uh, it's our closed session report, uh, we didn't have one, uh, this evening, uh, so we'll move to item five, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda?
Thank you.
Second?
All right, second, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we'll move on, thank you, uh, move on to item six, uh, which is announcements and presentations to the public in item 6.1, uh, which are brief comments by the City Council. We'll start with, uh, Councilmember Yarborough.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys got to enjoy the fair this, uh, last, uh, weekend, but I got to enjoy the fair, I actually got to do a little bit of bartending, so, uh, it was kinda fun, a little last-minute call for help from the fairgrounds, so, anyway, um, yeah, so that's what, uh, I got to do over the holiday.
All right, uh, Councilmember Gottberg?
Um, so I attended the Arts and Culture Carpenter Awards, I also attended a Women's Fund event, and went to a Groundwater Law and Legislation Forum in Sacramento with folks like Tony Atkins and other state regulators, so, a couple of things they were talking about of interest to us are modifications to SEQA and, uh, curtailing nineteen, pre-1914 water rights. I don't know how far that will go, but that was definitely part of the discussion.
I think lesser wars, or wars have been fought, that will be, that will be less ugly than fighting over pre-1914 water rights, uh, in the state of California, but, so I'm glad you were there, 'cause that is, those are them fighting words. Thank you, Nicole. Vice Mayor?
I attended a meeting with, uh, our PG&E representative with Cleve and Dave and Mark Acuna, and, um, really wanted to stress that there are PG&E rebates and incentives, um, they asked, uh, people to go to their websites, 'cause there's a lot of things out there that people aren't taking advantage of, so just wanted to try to get that message out. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, myself, I also went to the Arts and Culture Carpenter's Award. Actually, this was, I guess previously, and I forgot I mentioned it in the last council meeting, but I did go to Detroit, uh, as part of, uh, SAICOG for the, and this is funny, it's like the best acronym, it's NARC is the acronym, I don't know if I just said this last time, it's the National Association of Regional Councils, but the acronym is NARC, which I think is just hilarious. Um, but anyways, it was, it was actually a really good con, I mean, one, if you haven't been in Detroit in the last, like, 10 years, definitely go see Detroit, 'cause it's, they've done an amazing job of really redoing that city, and really some cool stuff, I mean, it didn't have a lot necessarily, you know, regionally, there was a lot of good applications that we could look at, a lot of good, uh, of, you know, other municipalities and other regional councils from across the nation, it had some really good ideas. We actually, Sacramento, we won an award, uh, for our, uh, Green Means Go program that we have at SAICOG for those green sort of infill projects that we have, uh, throughout the Essex County region, and for the, the money that we were able to get through the state legislature, uh, in the last budget cycle. Uh, but just a, a really good conference, was really happy to represent SAICOG at that, and, uh, like I said, go visit Detroit if you haven't been, it's pretty amazing what they've done at the, uh, their waterfront. I mean, when you look at the Canadian side and you look at the American side, and if you didn't know, and you, people asked you like, well, what's the American side, or what's the Canadian side, like, I think 90% of the people would pick the Canadian side as the American side, and Detroit as, as the Canadian side, so, they've just, it's, it's done, it's, they've done a really good job, I'd love to see some of that stuff happen in, in Sacramento. Um, let's see, anything else? I think that's it, I wanted to thank staff for, again, the good, the great job for the Community Cleanup Day, I know we had a lot of folks out there, so again, thank you, thank you for that as well. Uh, okay, uh, that is all on the comments by council, uh, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Oh, yes, thank you, uh, any comments, any public comments on, on our comments? All right, seen none, uh, we'll move to item seven, our consent calendar. Uh, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove, uh, an item for discussion. Do we have any, uh, items on the consent calendar that a council member wishes to pull or to, uh, discuss? All right, seen, now we'll go ahead and open up, uh, the consent calendar for any public comment. Come on up.
Uh, I had a concern with item 7.6, the, uh, consulting agreement with Kim Lee Horn for the local roadway safety plan. Um, it might not, it might be avail, or it might be, uh, good to pull this one for discussion, there seems to be a lack of information, um, on this item. I would love like to have seen, uh, a copy of the agreement included, uh, with this, with this item. According to staff report, uh, it's a new requirement of local agencies to apply for federal highway safety money, and the result of the development of this will be, um, it's gonna contribute to the statewide highway safety plan and be incorporated on future city roadway projects. It appears to me this is anything but routine, it seems like it's gonna be pretty impactful. Um, I'd like some information about how it will be used, exactly what it will contain, how it will affect long-range planning, um, and I would like to get, to see a copy of that agreement, uh, so maybe it's appropriate to pull that one for discussion, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments on, uh, the consent calendar? All right, seen none, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll pull item 7.6 for discussion. And, uh, with that, we'll bring it back to City Council, uh, for the rest of the consent calendar.
I'll move to adopt.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Regina. All right, moving along, uh, we'll move to item eight, which is our public comment on non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of City Council. And we'll go ahead to item 8.1, which is oral communication, so, if you'd like to address us, please come on up to, to the podium. Flip a coin.
Hello again, Ryan Carter, I'm sorry, I forgot to say my name earlier, so, I just wanna talk about a couple of things real quick. The Elroda County Junior Livestock Auction at the fair, my wife and I volunteered, uh, we were there at 6:30, serving breakfast to the kids. Uh, these kids are amazing, uh, they're smart, they're articulate, they're entrepreneurs, uh, the, the families are phenomenal, it's such a great event. Um, I, I wanted to recognize one young man in particular, his name is Dylan Brewster, he's a 17-year-old Union Mine student, uh, that donated, uh, 100% of the proceeds from his animal to the, um, Pollock Pines, uh, families that were involved in that crash back on May 31st. Uh, his one animal raised, um, shoot, uh, $59,000, nearly $59,000 for those families. The coolest part is, is that King's Meat now has that pig that was sold, they've processed it, and they're selling the meat, it's available now, and all the proceeds from the meat that is sold will also go to those families, uh, from Pollock Pines, it's just an amazing community outreach thing, and so if you want some pig, and help, and help those Pollock Pines families, go to King's Meat and grab that. It was an amazing display of generosity and community, uh, it's one of the best Elroda County has to offer, in my opinion, and so I would encourage anybody, I know, uh, David saw me there, uh, I would encourage anybody to join us next year, uh, possibly volunteer with Ruth and I, 'cause it's, it's inspirational, it's really great. Also wanted to address, uh, we had a, uh, a, a medical emergency at my house, uh, last week, and I've already talked to Chief Ren and expressed, uh, my appreciation, but there were two officers, Officer Singh and Officer Robinson, that responded, and, uh, I believe they saved my son-in-law's life, and so, I wanted to, uh, recognize them, I don't know if there's any way that I can nominate them for any more special recognition, but, uh, I wanted to make sure that they were recognized publicly. So, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comments, um, um, oh, yep. No, no problem, come on up. This is a non-agendized items, correct, if you have something that was not on the agenda. Yep, no problem.
I'm Sherri Howard, I am, uh, a member of Hangtown Kennel Club, and this year, I have been the show chairman for this event for 35 years. This year was the first year we had a horrible event, um, occur, uh, multiple, multiple, um, thefts at our event over Memorial Weekend. Um, we had to call Placerville PD to come in and excavate a couple of the homeless off of our facility. This has never happened to, to our show, and I don't know what the community wants to do about this. We got public, I mean, mass media attention about the thefts, and don't go to Placerville because of the, the, uh, unsafe situation. The shows bring, we have almost a thousand dogs a day, and when, with that entry, we'll bring millions of dollars of economic impact to this community, and I don't wanna see us losing any of that impact for the community because of this situation. Um, I was not informed as the event chairperson that there was this camp nearby the fairgrounds. I could've made some announcements, we could've made some things, we had a portable generator stolen, two pop-up canopies, coolers, um, equipment bags, um, just multiple stuff. And we had to call the Placerville PD to get, to have a gentleman who was mentally not quite right, and, and I applaud you for trying to bring a place for them to be, but we need to have something in place that also manages it and keeps our community healthy and strong, and I don't know if this is the right venue, I apologize, but I told my club I would make a representation here for you to let you know, I heard from the fairgrounds that they also had, um, multiple thefts. Something needs to be done to manage this, and I don't know what the answer is, but I just wanted to draw your attention that it is happening, and it is having an impact on the events that are coming to this community. If you have any questions for me, ask.
Thank you very much.
And if this isn't the right venue, tell me where-
No, it is, we just, it's, we end up taking in information and then we will respond after.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I, I appreciate that, I hadn't heard about any, um, deaths, I mean, we know things are happening, but I, I appreciate that, I would also encourage folks to, uh, talk to the sheriff as well, those are all county properties, both the, all the county buildings as well as the fairgrounds, and so, while they are within the city, um, there is some disagreement, if you will, over who does it, but those are county properties, so I would say also talk to the sheriff's office. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's go to item 8.2. Yes. Yes.
To Ryan's point, uh, on his commendation to Singh and Robinson, we did make a, a, lots of entries in their, um, war files, so, thank you for that.
Awesome, no, thank you. And thank you, Ryan, for bringing that to our attention, I know that probably wasn't an easy thing to do either, so, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, item 8.2, any written communications?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we did have one item pulled from the consent calendar, uh, and that is item 7.6, uh, and that is, uh, to consider approving a consult- point six, and that is to consider approving a consulting service agreement with Kim Lee Horn for the development of the city's local roadway safety plan in the amount of forty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and two cents. And Rebecca has this report for us. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I, first of all, I do want to apologize because in the original draft that went out for staff's report, the scope was actually included, and I apologize, in one of the iterations of editing, it got dropped off, and so I, my bad, my, my fault, sorry about that. So I did want to go over the scope of what we're actually doing here, so-
Yep.
This is a, this is a plan that is required by the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which their primary focus is exactly as it sounds, they try to make highways more safe or roads in general, more safe for all users, not just cars. So that includes evaluating safety concerns around our roads, our infrastructure, pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, and specifically as it pertains to this scope, it's matching what the requirements are for each SIP program, and that is, you know, they want to evaluate, they want an agency to evaluate their collision and roadway data, they want them to hold stakeholder group and public meetings, they want collision data analysis and identifying priority locations of where safety concerns currently exist, and they also want to present and identify countermeasures to those safety concerns, and all of that gets captured in a local road safety plan, and that is the very scope of their contract. It does come from the requirements of the Highway Safety Improvement Program. The reason why they are requiring agencies to do this moving forward with any H-SIP projects is because it does provide a way for a thoughtful planning mechanism on how we address our safety concerns in the city, and rather it be, you know, just, you know, an incident that may be one-off, or if it's a reoccurring issue, this is a great way for us to document that, and the public outreach component does capture that, too. You may recall on some of our other public outreach components for Placerville Drive, Bike and Ped, we requested and sent out the, the forum where people could put in where they've had, you know, near miss incidences, because those don't get reported, and it really is important that that information does get captured in, as we move forward trying to make our town and our roads safe for everyone. So how it will be used is it will help us identify project location areas based on safety concerns and problems identified within not only our collision data, but also within the public outreach, too. There is going to be a stakeholder group, there are going to be public meetings, there will be a draft report where the public can provide comments on that draft report, and then we'll final the report as well as we do with majority, I think, of our public reports. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. I know, for myself, I do this every day on Green Street, which is, I just gun it as I look both directions on Highway forty-nine and hope that no one's flying around the corner, because, yeah, there's no easy way to, I mean, Pierre, I'm sure, was used to that as well, is his old place off Highway forty, I think it was even worse for you, where your house is in one of the driveway, but, uh, yeah, we have lots of streets like this, that, near misses are almost a daily occurrence, so thank you for that. Uh, okay, council member, any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment on seven point six. Seeing none, I will go, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council for, I'll entertain a motion or any other comments.
I'll move, we approve seven point six.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second, no further comments, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Rebecca, and thank you for clarifying, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we did, we, that was item nine, items pulled from the consent, so we're going to move to our item ten, which are ordinances, and we do have one this evening, and that's item ten point one, and that's the consideration to amend Title Ten of the Placerville City Code to address required two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-nine housing element implementation programs, C two, which are ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and junior accessory dwelling units, to conform with new state regulations. This, I think, has been an ongoing thing, not just for us, but for all municipalities as we play catch-up with what the state hands down to us and takes away our ability to do things ourself, but that's a whole other thing. So with that, Mr. Revos, you have the report for us.
I think, I thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to start with just a brief history. Accessory dwelling units, or what we now refer to as ADUs, have historically been referred to as granny flats or secondary units, and have been permitted in California since the nineteen eighties. ADUs were originally created as a means to prevent the dislocation of family members and to allow for the care of aging parents by their children. Currently, ADUs are seen as a means of providing for affordable housing. In the year two thousand sixteen, Governor Brown approved legislation regarding ADUs to significantly reduce conditions a city could apply to the creation of these secondary units. In October of two thousand seventeen, the city replaced regulations within its zoning ordinance regarding secondary dwelling units with regulations regarding ADUs to bring the code into compliance with state law. These changes to the zoning ordinance were considered by the Planning Commission and the City Council back in April of two thousand nineteen pursuant to Senate Bill two-two-nine and Assembly Bill four-nine-four, which primarily addressed unit size, parking requirements, and setback requirements. So Title Ten was then updated following City Council approval on April the twenty-third of two thousand nineteen. So with respect to this request that's before you, this zone change is a request by city staff to amend Title Ten of the city code to comply with all state laws which have been approved by the governor since the last ordinance update regarding ADUs in April of two thousand twenty-three. These changes will bring our code into compliance with regards to the development of ADUs and a new type of unit called junior accessory dwelling units, or J-ADUs. Since the passage of Senate Bill two-two-nine and Assembly Bill four-nine-four, the state has enacted Senate Bill thirteen, Assembly Bill sixty-eight, five-eighty-seven, six-seventy, six-seventy-one, and eight-eighty-one, these being enacted in two thousand nineteen following the previous changes I talked about. And then we have Assembly Bill thirty-one eighty-two that was enacted in two thousand twenty, Assembly Bill three forty-five enacted in two thousand twenty-one, and Assembly Bill two-two-two-one, and Senate Bill eight ninety-seven, which were enacted in two thousand twenty-two. Staff completed an exhaustive consistency review of our zoning ordinance and identified the necessary text amendments to bring the city's regulations into conformance with state regulations. The identified text amendments include those to the following sections. Ten dash one dash four, this is the definition section of the zoning code, and these were, these included addition or updating of the ADU, J-ADU associated terms, and then we amended ten dash four dash four, parking and loading. We added some additional language requiring that no new parking stalls are required for ADUs and junior ADUs, which then I'll get into a little bit later, how staff treated that in accordance with comments we received from the Planning Commission. Section ten dash four dash twelve regarding ADUs, this existing section is, is to be repealed and replaced with a new section before you in conformance with city code and all applicable state laws, and then the updates to Title Ten, Chapter Five, zoning regulations to include J-ADUs and ADUs and further definitions of guest quarters and/or bungalow courts. The Planning Commission did consider the draft zoning code amendments on January seventeenth of two thousand twenty-three, essentially approving staff's recommendations, recommended changes to the code, and they recommended forwarding a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the changes. The commission at that time during their deliberations had concern regarding the city being a, being located within a very high fire hazard severity zone, and the state's mandated reduction in parking requirements for both ADUs and junior ADUs. The commission expressed the desire to either map out areas unsuitable for any reduction in parking requirements with may create bottlenecks on substandard roads which could hamper emergency evacuations and make it also difficult for passage of emergency vehicles. In order to address the Planning Commission's concern for public safety, given the city's substandard roads, staffs recommended the following language, and this is section ten dash four dash four E twenty-five regarding accessory dwelling units, we have the general provision of one stall per unit, and onsite parking shall be required for projects located on some standard streets. And then we also modified section ten dash four dash twelve B two N, where we also included the standard requirement of one stall per unit, and we also then inserted the language, one site parking shall be required for projects located on some standard streets. I just want to emphasize to the council the way this would typically work, it would be on a case-by-case basis, so staff would, under consultation with the engineering department and with El Dorado County Fire District, to make that determination that the street is, is unsafe, there's virtually or no on, on-street parking available, thus we would be able to make the findings and require that the applicant would require parking onsite. Regarding impact fees, this is something I just want to go over briefly, because one thing that the state, these state changes have done is it's, has reduced the city's ability to collect impact fees. So just real quickly, say somebody comes in for a single-family dwelling unit, the temp fee would run eighteen thousand four hundred and nine dollars, park fees would be one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, sewer connection would be seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, and water would be twenty-one thousand and forty-six dollars. So the impact fees have been changed for any proposed ADU that's greater than or, or equal to seven hundred and fifty square feet, and so the impact fee would be proportional to the dwelling unit that it's being built on, either attached or detached. Excuse me, so say, for example, somebody has a twenty-four hundred square foot primary dwelling unit, they're coming in with accessory dwelling unit to be half that, their impact fees then would be fifty percent, or half what we would charge for, for a primary dwelling unit. For structures that are less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, the city is not permitted to charge traffic impact mitigation fees, nor can we charge for park development fees. Water and sewer fees typically may not be required for junior ADUs because, of course, they're within the envelope of the existing dwelling unit and would tie into the existing water and sewer systems, unless they're created in conjunction with a brand-new single-family dwelling unit. So an applicant comes in, they're going to build a single-family dwelling unit, and part of that application includes the construction of an ADU or junior ADU, the city would have the ability then to apply fees. So water and sewer fees will be required for all attached or detached ADUs proportionate to their burden within a single-family residential zone and multifamily zoning. So I just wanted to briefly touch on the impact of fees. Just so you know, when, when staff prepared the budget analysis for this upcoming fiscal year and we're looking at potential number of accessory dwelling units, we did consider the reduction in fees, so it's, it'll be reflected in, in the budget. So moving on to the recommendation, staff is recommending that the council introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Title Ten of the Placerville Municipal Code, which is the zoning ordinance, and this will amend, and I'm not sure if I should read the whole thing or not, but just for the sake of making sure it's in the record, I'll go ahead and read this. So it's amending code section ten dash one dash four, that's the definition section, will be amending ten dash four dash four, the parking and loading, repeal and reenact ten dash four dash twelve regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, amend ten dash five dash four, that's the estate residential zone district, ten dash five dash five, that's R one A, single-family acre, one-acre residential zone, ten dash five dash six, it's R one, twenty thousand, single-family residential zone, ten dash five dash seven, so R one, ten thousand square foot, single-family residential zone, ten dash five dash eight, R one, six thousand, single-family residential zone, ten dash five dash nine, that's R two, low-density multifamily residential zone, ten dash five dash ten, R, R three, medium-density multifamily residential zone, ten dash five dash eleven, the R four, medium-density multifamily residential zone, ten dash five dash twelve, R five, medium-density multifamily residential zone, ten dash five dash thirteen, BP, that's Business Professional Zone, ten dash five dash fourteen, that's a central business district zone, ten dash five dash fifteen, C, the commercial zone, ten dash five dash sixteen, CC, that's the convenience commercial zone, ten dash five dash seventeen, the highway commercial zone, ten dash five dash eighteen, the heavy commercial zone, ten dash five dash nineteen, I or industrial zone, ten dash five dash twenty, PF, that's a public facility zone, and ten dash five dash twenty-four, the Housing Opportunity or HO overlay zone of Title Ten. A lot of these, you would think, well, why are we discussing accessory dwelling units and commercial and industrial zones? That's because we do have pre-existing single-family residential zones in those districts, and so we are required then to allow for accessory dwelling units in those zones as well, and that's why you see that. So with that, that concludes staff's report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
All right, thank you, Pierre, that was a, a lot, so appreciate, appreciate the very thorough presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, a couple.
Yep, go for it.
Okay, Pierre, so you guys were talking about streets that were too small, which I live in one of those neighborhoods, I guarantee it. Is there some way that we're going to be identifying those streets so the public knows which ones that we're, they're going to be dealing with, if they happen to live on that street, they know that they're going to have to provide a, you know, a parking space for their accessory dwelling unit?
The Planning Commission had, had asked if it was possible for staff to actually come up and create a map showing these, these streets. I would say it, it could be six months, maybe a year out of an effort really to do that, that's a substantial effort to really do that. So the way staff's approach, at least currently, would be to pursue that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Typically, an applicant is consulting with city staff about how to go about and the cost of constructing an ADU, and so I think at least we'd have that opportunity then to identify their street and determine whether or not they would be required to provide for onsite parking as opposed to allowing no parking requirements.
Gotcha. And then will health and safety be enough for the change? I mean, we're going to be arguing with the state at this point, so, you know, at that point, are we, is that going to be a valid argument with somebody, you know, you say, well, you're going to have to provide parking, and then they run to the state and say, well, wait a minute here, how come I'm not, I'm not supposed to have to provide parking to do this? So is the city going to be able to defend that?
Um, it certainly is. Our, our read of the codes is that the, the city does have the ability to make health and safety findings, and in the case of, and we all know many streets that are narrow, for example, Green Street that I heard mentioned earlier, I mean, I think that's a very narrow, very steep, endangered street, we wouldn't want to be in a situation where we're allowing then ADUs, and many times, the creation of ADUs, for example, if it's a conversion of an existing garage, well, then not only are, would then we be not creating additional parking for the creation of ADUs, but we probably lost parking with the conversion of that garage, and so we could really be exacerbating a health and safety issue by having cars parked on a substandard street. So it'll be on a case-by-case basis, at least, at least in the interim until we come up with an idea of how to actually identify these roads in advance.
Okay, yeah, and as long as you feel confident with it, I'm, I'm good with that, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we have a, a valid argument if we're going to put that out there.
So-
Missy Verhe- yeah.
Yeah, thank you, just to add to that a little bit, and this advice is good for today, but the legislature keeps modifying the ADU statute, so we don't know what that's going to look like tomorrow, and HCD has its own interpretation of the statutes, which sometimes does, do not comport with what practitioners think. So that's a, that's been a challenge for jurisdictions right now. Having said that, the overarching purpose of, and the legislative findings that were codified in the statutes implemented- codified in the statutes implementing ADU law and JADU law is that the legislature says in the beginning of these statutes that we want to promote the development of housing. There is a housing shortage, and we are commanding that local agencies remove barriers to essentially development of this housing. And then they say that you can have certain requirements in your ordinances, and then they tell you exactly what your ordinance has to cover and what it can cover. And then they say you can have parking regulations overarching. Then they say, "But you can't have, and you cannot, but you can't have parking that exceeds one parking stall per ADU." And there are five instances where you cannot regulate and ask for parking. And those are ADUs located within a half-mile walking distance of public transit, ADUs located within an architecturally or historically significant historic district, ADUs that are part of the proposed or existing primary residence or an accessory structure, and that includes if you have a legal non-conforming ADU that was built before these, and they come in and they say, "I want to make it legal now." So you can't then say, "Now you have to provide us parking." You have to kind of honor that. When on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupant of the ADU, and when there is a car-share vehicle located within one block of the ADU. So in those five categories, we cannot compel parking. But in the other ones, we can. And then there's another statute that says, "But if there are life or safety issues and you make specific findings to support them, then you can require parking." And that's the piece that Mr. Rebus has been stating. We have to have stated findings on the record, but everything else really needs to be made as objective and ministerial as possible so that there's not this ongoing negotiation between staff and an applicant. For the most part, they are checking the boxes that we provide on an application, and only to the extent that they're seeking an exemption would there be, you know, something before the Planning Commission, as an example.
Okay. So that kind of goes back to my map idea. So I know it's long and treacherous and probably going to take forever to put together, but I think it might be something we want to at least consider for the general public because at least at that point, ahead of time, they can look at it right there on a website, or it can be handed to them the minute they put in an application that if they're in that particular neighborhood, here is what is going to be required. So I don't know. Anyway, at least that's kind of my view on it at this point, just to, you know, save us some future headaches possibly.
I'm going to ask a question along those lines then. From staff's perspective, how much time or how labor-intensive would it be to put together a map like that?
It's the opinion of staff that it's very labor-intensive, and right now, we're, let's just say, we're extremely busy. We have some very large projects, very limited staff, very new staff. We just don't have, we just don't have a lot of flexibility at the moment to then be working on this particular thing, so on preparing a map. And so that's why in the interim, we prepared these minor changes to the code as was originally proposed or recommended by the Planning Commission so we can address it more on a case-by-case basis. I don't see us so flooded with ADU applications that it isn't anything that we can't handle on a case-by-case basis, at least at the moment.
I'd like to make one additional point. So we do have to submit this proposed ordinance once it's adopted to HCD for review and approval. It's my experience that it is extremely rare that they are accepting them on the first try. They often are making revisions and sending them back. So I wanted to manage your expectations so that you don't feel like, when we approve this, this is it. They might then have their own, like I said, interpretations of our parking standards or whatnot. And in that, you know, in between time, we can start thinking about some maybe definitions for what does substandard mean if we don't have a map that, you know, would otherwise take six months to, a year to develop.
So I'm going to ask another question on this front. If we do not require parking, will that, at that point, then be kind of fully compliant without this obscurity on what's substandard and, I don't know, I'm not know if I'm phrasing that question right.
I understand your question, yes. So the least restrictive ordinance, that's what HCD is looking for, right? They're looking for any impediments. So if you are being more permissive than what the statute requires, then that is okay. You just cannot be more restrictive in certain circumstances.
Okay. And then I guess another question. If we decide a street is unsafe to park on, can we make that street no parking through a different process?
Yeah, in fact, we did that maybe a year ago. There were some streets, I recall, where we had this discussion that we were saying no, Green Street was actually one of them, where there was no street parking. But there was several in the city, and I'm trying to remember what that was for, how it prompted it. But we did do that on several streets throughout the city. Nick, I don't remember if you...
That's done through ordinance that complies with California Vehicle Code at that point. So it's this body that makes that determination, I believe through engineering, the Assistant Board.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So we did have, we did have some, so there are some streets that, in addition to what was already sort of on the books, and then we included a few more, but I know there's more than, I'm sure there's like, I would say ninety percent of the north side of town probably has streets like that. And then, you know, Chamberlain and other areas where it's very difficult to, you know, go these little roads that were made for buggies to have, you know, cars. We can't even drive down Main Street with cars parked on both sides on certain parts because there's, you know, you have to kind of wait for a car to go through, and then you can go through. So it's, there's definitely streets that were going to run into this issue.
Mayor, if I may, just one additional comment in regards to parking. Just so the council's aware, staff painstakingly went through all of the assembly bills and Senate bills to make sure that we followed the letter of the law. So there is no other area, at least that we're aware of, unless we somehow missed something where we're falling short in what the state requires. So the only issue that really came up with the Planning Commission was this issue of being in a high fire hazard severity zone and health and safety. And so, you know, again, I think this is at least a good, it would be difficult for me to understand the state trying to turn that around on this one issue, considering that we are allowing or we are waiving parking except on these streets where it's clearly upon review by the engineering department and by El Dorado County Fire. It's fire that we typically would review. We want to make sure that, from their perspective, they can get their apparatus in there and safely evacuate people. If we don't have onsite parking and then everybody's parking the street and essentially clogging and turning, you know, a road width into a little one-lane road, that could be a real serious situation. So I would, I would just hope that, at least in this case, we're not going to get pushback from the state on this. Because we do take affordable housing seriously. I think we're doing very well in trying to promote it. We're working very closely with Housing El Dorado. We're trying to work on getting approval of, let's just say, they would be master plan, pre-approved ADUs that a customer could then use. So other than citing the unit on the property, the structure itself is already approved. And so we're doing, we're looking at additional measures to try and increase and make ADUs a viable option. So I'm hoping that parking isn't something that's going to, you know, rankle somebody up there at HCD.
Thank you, Pierre. And I think, you know, we'll see. I mean, I don't, I'm not taking any bets that we're not going to get pushback on our first try. But I'm also happy to, you know, be part of any outreach back to them, to invite HCD here to take a tour of our streets and, you know, we can do a firsthand view of a lot of things to really show. Because sometimes I think it's not quite the same when you're looking at a map versus, you know, driving these things themselves. So we can certainly extend that invitation if we need to. I did have a question. It's related, but I just wanted to get some clarification on, so JADUs is just, it's attached or is it just a smaller square footage than what an ADU? I'm just trying to remember what the difference is between JADU and ADU.
It's actually quite a big difference. A junior accessory dwelling unit can only be a carve-out of the building envelope of the existing house.
Okay.
A JADU is permitted to have access to the main dwelling unit. They're permitted to have what's called an efficiency kitchen. They're not required to have a kitchen. They can have, but they are required to have a full bath, but they can share the kitchen if it's a real small unit, there's space. They can share the kitchen in the main house. And it must have access to the outside as well.
Oh, okay.
Very small unit carved out within the existing dwelling unit.
Understood. And you can actually share a kitchen? Interesting. Okay. That I did not know. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments at this point? I will say, you know, to the map idea as well, because I mean, that would be the best process. But I guess as they come in, and to your point, Pierre, we're not getting overrun, but, you know, if we start building that map, if you will, as they come in, because we'll start knowing the streets as we get the application. So we know of CMIS or, you know, wherever, Northridge, you know, we'll start building that file in a sense. So you sort of build a map as you go, I guess would be one thought.
Yes, that's a very good point, Mayor. We will be doing that. We'll slowly piece together data information and hopefully come out with a map where we clearly identify in advance of where these streets and roads are.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess one concern I have is with people making investments now. So if you're going and you're purchasing a property and you think you're buying that property based on, you know, what you've read in the state law and that you're going to be able to put an ADU on with no parking because you're one of these five categories, right? You're in a historic district, something like that. I guess that's one of my concerns with the case-by-case basis, take it as it comes. So I'm just throwing that out there so people know that.
It's true. I mean, I think it's going to be buyer beware always, right? Like, you got to really ensure what you're getting. But you're right. I mean, it's, and to both your points, it won't, it won't surprise me if one day Joan Jane Smith, you know, get denied and then, you know, or required to have a parking space, and then they go to HCD saying Placerville's, you know, out of compliance with the code. So, you know, hopefully HCD will have already written off, you know, but yeah, I could foresee complaints.
As long as you got a good real estate agent that's local, they should be knowing this.
There you go.
Mayor, if I may, the staff has created a very, I would say, a comprehensive table or cheat sheet is what we call it, where we've actually, you know, we list, you know, the ADU, the junior ADU, all the different zone districts, and all the regulations are on this one-page, eleven-by-seventeen spreadsheet. And so we will be amending it then to at least address this parking issue. So it's clearly in this particular document, which is also available on our website.
Thank you, Pierre. And I know, I mean, there's still a tranche of housing bills still going through this year, so we'll see if something else comes through. I don't think there was anything in the budget. There's some SEQA language, but it's for bigger, bigger projects that came through. So I think we're safe from a budget perspective, but there's still tons of legislation surrounding housing going through, so we shall see.
I heard about a cleanup bill on SB nine last week from Tony Atkins, so I'm not sure what's in that, but...
Oh, yeah. There's full-time legislature, so makes for full-time employment on the other end, I guess. But, okay, with that then, I will go ahead and open up for public comments on item ten point one.
Ryan Carter again. I forgot to say earlier, I should note that all of my comments this evening are as a member of the public and in no other capacity. I had a couple of comments and a couple of suggestions on this. First, the bungalow courts. I was at the Planning Commission meeting where they talked about this as a member of the public, and I don't recall any conversations regarding the bungalow courts. I see that they're defined here on the ordinance as a group of three or more detached one or two-story, one-family dwellings, it's all there. I guess my question would be, are there any currently existing bungalow courts within the city? One that comes to mind, I know there's a property on Airport Road on the left-hand side that's got a bunch of tiny homes on it. Would that be what this is referring to as far as a bungalow court goes? Secondly, to Mona's point, I also was looking at the substandard streets. I find no definition in the city code about what a substandard street is. I would like to see some kind of language in this ordinance to define that. I did find one interesting area, city code section nine-three-eight, which refers to restricted parking. It might be helpful for staff and for you guys to take a look at that because they have a couple of definitions in here that might be helpful while developing this definition. So one of them is any area in which the distance between the curb and the center line of a two-lane road is less than twenty feet. They also talk about no parking on any street where it causes vehicles to cross the fog line. So stuff like that might come in handy when it comes to developing this definition. Also, in that same code section, nine-three-eight, there's an exhaustive alphabetical list of city streets where these restricted parking situations exist. So that might also be very helpful for staff to develop that definition. But I would like to see some kind of a definition of what substandard streets are. Also, in regards to, it's on page seven, item number three pertaining to historic resources. To prevent adverse impacts on any building listed in the California Register of Historic Resources or located within a historic district, exterior improvements must comply with SOI. There's, I want, I would like to add on that, the city's historic resources inventory. I think that list should be included in that subsection because there are houses that are on that resource inventory that are not in a historic district or on the California Register of Historic Resources. So I would like to see that added to that subsection three, especially in light of our effort to update that list. So those are my comments, and I look forward to seeing how this ends up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on item ten point one? All right, seen no other. I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for further comments.
Yeah, just some comments I have is, you know, we have to take public safety into consideration first and foremost. I mean, if you can't get a fire truck down a street and there's a house on fire, if you can't get an ambulance and someone's having a heart attack, that's really going to come back to us in a worse way than this is. So I think we have to really look at those things and push what's safe for our citizens. I appreciate wanting a map. I had thought of that actually first off, too, but I also know what a backlog we have of work in that department, and the state keeps adding more and more. And so sometimes there are things that we want that just have to wait.
Well, I like Michael's idea.
Yeah.
As we go.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, I want to, no, I appreciate that and I had that thought, but always conscious of this, being realistic about staff time. Yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Cotter.
So, you know, I have concerns about fairness and government putting restrictions on what people can do with their property and a person on one street being told their street is substandard and they need parking, and a person on another street being told they don't need that and they can put an ADU in without parking. I think the public safety issue can be addressed. If we truly think that a street is not safe, people can have five people in their house, whether it's attached or not attached, or, so, I mean, you can have parking on streets and as costs of housing go up in our community, I think we're going to see a lot more people living on properties regardless if they're within one house or in multiple houses. So I think the better way to address that issue would be through putting no parking on the streets that we truly feel like a fire truck can't pass and, you know, because I don't, I don't think it's an ADU issue per se that we're going to get more people living in houses. And I don't want to put a restriction on that. So I'm sort of not in favor of requiring one stall per unit on any property, and I think there's another pathway to deal with the public safety issue.
Thank you. Question for staff and colleagues as well, because this was a suggestion by Mr. Carter in terms of adding the inventory to that third bullet on items on page seven, which would be item, was under item I. I know, I know we, I know we generally have the inventory when we do those things. I didn't know if there was any difference in this case of adding it in or not, but I know we've included the historic inventory in other things that we've done. So just wanted to get staff's comments and then see what council thought.
Pierre, do you have thoughts on that, whether or not we could add the historic inventory list?
Excuse me. I'm sort of massaging that in my mind because the inventory was a precursor, it was an exercise... it was a, it was an exercise performed for the city to allow the defining of our four residential historic districts, so I think it's probably better served if we identify the four historic districts as opposed to the inventory, because the inventory is a smaller number of units that are within a historic district, so it wasn't every single building or structure within the historic districts that were inventoried, it was a number of them in order to allow the city to have a better justification for creating these historic districts and for defining the boundaries of the historic districts, so I'm not really sure what that really gets us, that would be my question, so I'd have to evaluate that further, not able to do it on the fly, but that's my, that's my comment, initial comment.
Clever, yeah, I thought.
So my, my question was going to be, do we know, are there structures on that list that are outside of a historic district, or are they all within the four historic districts?
No, there's stuff outside of it, yeah.
They're all within the four historic districts, and then we also have some additional structures and buildings that have been designated historic outside by resolution of the city council.
Okay. Okay, any, I don't know what you all think.
Well, I think the whole purpose is, is ordinance is to come in compliance with the state, I mean, they're going to keep doing things, we're going to have to keep changing things, I think, you know, we could keep going and going and spend a lot more staff time on this, but I'm kind of in favor of moving forward with this, yes, there's things we can improve and, and look at, you know, putting no parking on, on streets and that, but I, I'm also in favor in getting our ordinance's compliance.
Mayor, if I can just add an additional comment, I'm just reading again that section there on page seven, three, subsection three, there are historic resources, it basically states that are located within an historic district, exterior improvements of the existing buildings shall only be permitted if the proposed improvements are consistent with the Secretary of Material Standards Rehabilitation, so I just want to call to the council's attention that we will be trying to schedule a joint planning commission, city council workshop with consultant to sort of flush out how we approach, how, how do we apply the Secretary of Interior standards, so I just bring that up, because this section may change pursuant to the direction we receive from the council on the treatment of our historic districts and how we regulate them under our site plan review process.
Got you, thank you, Pierre, and there's, that's a good point, I think members of the public will appreciate, I mean, we've been, we have been consistently inconsistent in how we apply those standards over the decades, including my time when I was on planning commission, so, to your point, Pierre, I think, hopefully, we're going to get to a point where we have a, here's what we really mean when we say that, or is it shall, is it may, and all those other things, so, good point. And David, you were going to have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I'm agreeing with Jackie here, I think we've got a good start, because, number one, like Mona said, this has got to go back to the HTC anyway, and they're going to, like you said, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're probably going to see some, hey, we want to see some either clarification or corrections or whatnot, and I think there, you know, we've got a lot of stuff in here that's just going to open up a can of worms for a whole bunch of things, and we're going to have to deal with it as we, as we can, you know, with the historic districts, and then, of course, if you're in a historic district, there's a, you know, consensus that you can do something different, or if you're within half a mile of, I mean, I could name a historic district right now that's within half a mile of a bus, half a mile of, you know, so, all of a sudden, you're falling into a whole bunch of different reasonings of why the ordinance may or may not apply, so I think we've got a good start, and go from there, and then deal with it as we need to.
Thank you, David, I agreed, I mean, I think, and Nicole, I like your point, I think we probably do need to relook at that list, and I'm trying to remember how it came up, it was either, it was a year or two ago, but we did look at these streets, because we added more to those streets, and it may have been the, the list that Mr. Carter brought up, that we added more streets to, but that could be just something literally moved over into this to show, you know, these are a bunch of the streets where we don't have on-street parking, because they're just tiny little streets, and then that would help clarify all of this as well, so I do think we, there may be a head start already there. Okay, any other, any other comments at this point on this one, if not, I will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance as recommended by the planning commission and staff and waive the first reading.
And we're actually introducing by title only today, not adopting it.
Okay, and introducing by title only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cockberg?
No.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Noe?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Motion passes, three, one, one absent, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, Pierre, thank you very much, a lot of work on this, so appreciate, appreciate it, and, yes, none of us will, you know, be floored when, you come back with this, because HCD has, has questions, so, thank you. Okay, we will move to our public hearings, and we have two tonight, and eleven point one is consider adopting the proposed fiscal 2023, 2024 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented, and Mr. Warren has this hearing for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Saragosa, members of the council, so over the past six months, as you know, the city's budget team, which is comprised of all departments, the city manager, has collectively developed both the operating and capital improvement program budget in a manner that aligns with the city council's established fiscal policies, strategic plan, and maintains essential program delivery to the greatest extent possible, as part of the budget development process, the city council held a budget workshop on May tenth, and the staff presented the department requests, including the alternative service levels and changes in the program, the capital outlay, the alternative service levels, equipment, and CIP projects, conference training and travel, and received input from the council and the public, a second workshop was held on May thirtieth, and we presented the draft operating and CIP budgets for fiscal year 2324, and received additional input from the council and the public, an initial public hearing was held regarding the budget on June thirteenth, and again, we received input from the council and the public, the Measure HL Sales Tax Committee met on both May first and June fifth to discuss the proposed streets, sewer system, water system, projects that should be funded and constructed over the next year, the committee's recommendations have been incorporated in the proposed budget, the proposed operating budget and CIP budget include the same assumptions as what was discussed at the budget open hearing on June thirteenth, the attached budget documents are the same format as in the past, including multi-year summaries of all aggregate operating revenues, expenditures, as well as detailed expenditure summaries for all departments and divisions, the proposed operating budget is balanced and totals twenty-five million four hundred and ten thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars, the proposed general fund budget totals twelve million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and four dollars, which reflects a one million four hundred and eighty-four thousand three seventy, or thirteen point three six increase, the proposed general fund budget has a planned one million one hundred and five thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollar deficit, and the reason that is, is over the past three years, the city has accumulated over three point six million dollars in positive fund balance, and there are one million thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars in planned deficits utilized, utilizing these funds for one-time expenditures such as five hundred thousand dollars to pay down part of the net pension liability, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for equipment, and two, almost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for CIP projects, the operating budget includes salary and benefit commitments to employees, six new positions among police, engineering, and community service departments, the proposed budget includes eighty-six thousand dollars for training, and four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for new equipment, from desktop computers to a new roller compactor for the public works department, the proposed CIP budget totals four million four hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, and includes nineteen new projects from remodeling the police department kitchen to repaving sections of Canal Street, the budget is a living document that can be revised at any time by the council, the city council did receive two funding requests, one from Arts and Culture Eldorado for the municipal public arts plan, and another request from the Heritage Association for funding to update the city's historic resources inventory, staff plans on returning to the council later this summer with an update on the American Rescue Plan Fund, including recommendations for the funding requests received from Arts and Culture Eldorado and Heritage Association, I would like to publicly thank the budget team, the Measure HL Sales Tax Committee, the city council for once again working together to balance this year's budget, which is a responsible plan for operating the city over the next year, and a wise investment in the future, I would also like to thank your city treasurer accountant Candace Bernardi, and your accountant Sharon Heckley for their stellar work on preparing this year's budget, with that, I respectfully ask that you adopt the resolution approving both the proposed fiscal year 2324 operating and CIP budgets as presented, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Dave, and thank you and your team for a lot of hard work again on putting this all together, so we really always appreciate that, is there any questions? All right, we will go ahead and open up item eleven point one for any public comment, and I'll just remind people, I just got a text saying, if people can really speak into that microphone here at the podium, because it's sort of unforgiving, and YouTube can't hear it.
Kirk Smith, I've watched meetings of the city council periodically over a long period of time, I confess, I never paid much attention to the budget process itself, so that's why I had this feeling of urgency at the last meeting to present a proposal, so I understand that the money's up for consideration in August, which is exciting, because then you can expect a detailed written proposal, and the account for every nickel we expect to spend, so that's, that's good news, and the reasons to do it are pretty clear, our teams looked at scores of inventories throughout the country and throughout the state, ours is the sketches, as you illustrated at the last meeting, deciding, describing a beautiful home on Columbus Street, that's simply described as the Skinner House, it doesn't say anything else, so before the meeting, I told you what my research finds, that it was John Henry Skinner, who was born in England in eighteen forty-two, and he moved to this country shortly afterwards, when in the, in his twenties, moved to this county to engage in gold mining, he bought the land to build his property, the house, from a small beach, an old family, built two houses that are identical, one verge, he died, I can see my time's right now, but he died in nineteen twelve, and the newspapers reported that he died of miners' consumption, which was a term used in those days to describe miners who were ill as a result of, you know, the dust and dirt and fumes and all the rest being in the ground, so his wife died afterwards, and Jane and John Skinner are moved up the street literally to the Union Cemetery, their plots overlook the Skinner House, and it's been the home of prominent class civilians ever since, thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Hello, my name is Jacob Regoldi, and I wanted to actually offer some support as well for the initiative of potential funding and support of revisiting the historic resources and the inventory, I would disclose first that I actually live in one of the homes, it's in one of the historic neighborhoods, it's the Judge Thompson House on Cedar Ravine, which we are lovingly restoring, but separately, I also wanted to convey that I'm a board member of the Historical Society, and representing the Historical Society, what I would say is, we would love the opportunity to work with Kirk and the foundation, the Heritage Association, rather, to consider the opportunity for partnership, including helping to do things like even fundraise or make contributions in order to keep the cost of performing this effort as low as possible, we do want to be fiscally conservative certainly in doing this, but we know that the return for the city and for our future as a city in so far as protecting the historic resources that we, remain with us, is of a difficult, is difficult to actually measure, but fairly substantial, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ryan Carter, I'm thrilled, you know, this discussion about the historic inventory and this gathering steam, so it's really awesome, we look forward to the August update where we can possibly have some more input on that, I do have a couple of quick questions, I'd like to first congratulate the city on an awesome budget, once again, fiscally conservative, you know, the pension unfunded liability payment is a fantastic idea, I would like to ask possibly, Dave, if you know off the top of your head, of your head, where that puts us after that half million dollars, where that number stands, I did have a couple of quick questions, on page fourteen of the budget, dealing with development services, there's an item there for code enforcement, and I was noticing that the number of hours that are estimated and projected in the upcoming year is a huge explosion in the, in the amount of code enforcement activities, going from three-hundred-and-sixty-nine hours last year to eighteen hundred estimated this year, to twenty-four hundred estimated next year, I was wondering what is causing that huge jump in code enforcement hours, because it appears during, down towards the bottom of the page, the open code enforcement cases is expected to drop, so I was just curious how that came about, also, on page fifty-three, in dealing with the downtown parking, the leased parking revenues appear to be cutting almost in half, going from a hundred and nine thousand estimated this year to sixty-four thousand and some change proposed for next year, so I was curious what caused that huge drop in leased parking revenues, but other than that, congratulations, guys, you've got a great budget, I'm happy we're making some investments, I would encourage us to keep doing that with the pension unfunded liability if we can in years going forward, but otherwise, this is awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, member of the Measure H, Measure L committee, and I am really glad to see what Measure H and Measure L are able to do to help the city budget and to help infrastructure in the city of Placerville, there's a lot of other jurisdictions who do not have a sales tax initiative like this, and they are struggling, and we are making progress, and thanks to the great engineering department and the financial responsibility, I think that those two measures are really made a difference in the city of Placerville, I'm really proud to be a member of that committee.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council, any further comments, I know there was a couple of things from staff, I don't, on parking, parking revenue, I don't know if anyone had any, any comments on that?
I do, Mayor, so, the report on page fifty-three shows downtown parking worship for maintenance, and what it does is that we kind of show you equivalently, there's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in cost to maintain the parking district, and so we show comparably daily parking as well as a portion of the leased parking, so that balances to the hundred and sixty-one thousand, but actually, the total leased parking, we're budgeting a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars, so it's just a portion of that for the maintenance, we also have other things like building, you know, the computer systems that we have to maintain, parking enforcement, so on and so forth, so it's about flat, just so you know, your budget in fiscal year two thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three was a hundred and twelve thousand nine ninety-four, and we're budgeting a hundred and nine thousand, so about a thirty-four thousand dollars, excuse me, thirty-four hundred dollar decrease slightly, it's just based on trend right now, what we're seeing, so, and then on the unfunded liability, as the last valuation report, that amount was about seventeen million, so that would, that five hundred thousand would reduce that by the five hundred thousand, that will save over twenty years about four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in interest, I want to warn you, though, that the loss that PERS had last year, that number, that seventeen million is probably going to creep up to around twenty million, so we're, we're making progress, but... So we're making progress, but there's little bumps along the way. So we're worried that number will creep down over time.
And Dave, that also frees up yearly funding as well, correct? I mean, in terms of...
That's correct, yeah. So what you also did, the council purposely set aside 1% of salary each in your operating budget to also pay down on an ongoing basis in addition to that 500,000. So that will also help. We figure over a 20-year period, that potentially could save about $90,000 in interest.
Great. Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to say, Cleve?
No, just on the code enforcement question. I don't, Pierre, do you have an answer for that?
I do. If you look at the actual hours that are shown for 2020 and 2021, and 2021 and 2022, those numbers were pulled out of a hat. So when I first came on board back in 2013, those numbers were the same. So there was no thought given, no actual analysis provided as far as the personnel annual hours or hours for that fiscal year attributed to a particular item. And so we really did a more in-depth analysis of the number of hours, staff hours that would be attributed to these categories. We haven't done that. This is the first time we did that was in this fiscal year. So I'd forgotten about that, and I was wondering if somebody was going to pick up on that and ask a question about it. But I think that's what it is. We can certainly revisit and just make sure the numbers are accurate, because I think there's over 2,000 some odd hours for a full-time employee. So we have a full-time code enforcement person, and that's over 2,000 hours right there. But I do code enforcement, the building official does code enforcement. We have other staff working on code enforcement. So we have a very robust code enforcement activity that's going on right now. And so we are spending a lot of hours on it. It was in very, very bad shape. We were very much behind. So I think that number reflects that, and I think it's accurate. But staff is more than happy to take a second look, and we can certainly report back to the council on those numbers.
Thank you, Pierre. And I know, yeah, because I want to say, I mean, we hadn't had a fully funded position.
Half-time position.
You know, it was a part-time. So we've really, that's been bumped up just on the natural because of, we now have a full-time person in place, so. Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Sorry, I'm like totally distracted because I see like these little green sprinkles. Someone had a rainbow donut up here, and now I'm totally want a rainbow donut, so. It's my, don't mind me. All right. Thank you, Pierre, for that. And Dave, any other questions on budget? All right, then I will, if anyone would like to move forward or...
I'll move that we adopt the budget.
All right, there you go.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Neal.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye. All right. Thank you again, everybody that worked on this budget. Thank you very much for all the hard work and for us getting it done early as well. I mean, I know we can go longer even to be able to do this, but I'm glad that, you know, we're in a spot where we can get this done early and, you know, move on. And, you know, if things arise, which they do, we can always, you know, come back and revisit those things. But again, thank you for the work. And as a follow-up to our budget, item 11.2, considering establishing the appropriation limit, the GAN limit, for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and determining compliance with Government Code Section 7910. And again, Mr. Warren has his report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a routine item we take up each year. Section 7910 of the state government code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriation or GAN limit by resolution. Each year, the city is required to adjust its GAN limit by both the prior year per-capita personal income increment as well as the prior year change in population. The change in per-capita personal income was actually 7.55%, and the change in population was 0.09%, according to the State Department of Finance. Based on these factors, the fiscal year 22, 23 GAN limit is calculated to be $28,830,394. The general fund proceeds revenue, which is essentially taxes within your budget, is $9,323,064, leaving $19,507,330 of unused appropriation. Once again, Placerville is well within its GAN limit. And with that, staff request the council to adopt the resolution as presented and set the GAN limit as shown.
All right. Thank you, Dave. And as I will do every year when I hold this mic and even when I don't, is we live within our GAN limit. The state has financial sophistry to be able to live within the GAN limit. This year, didn't have a choice, but in good years, it's interesting. Okay, so with that, any questions on this? All right, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public for comment. All right, see none. We'll bring it back. Further discussion or a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the GAN limit.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a first and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Neal.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye. All right, and that measure passes. Thank you, Dave. Okay, that finishes the public hearing portion of our agenda. We're going to move to our discussion and action items and item 12.1, and that is to provide direction to staff to pursue a recommended alternative for the Trip to Green project, and if applicable, authorize staff to apply for state and federal funding for said project. And Rebecca has his report for us.
Good evening again. So this project came before you last on March 14th with a presentation of the draft report, the Corridor Action Plan Report, and an invitation for public comments. Since that time, the US-50 Corridor Action Plan for the Trip to Green Project, following receipt of said public comment, was finalized by the Eldorado County Transportation Commission on May 4th of this year, with the preferred commission's alternative being the implementation of a permanent Trip to Green project. That was based off of public input received on the report. With project funding becoming available, commission and city staff have identified several eligible funding sources for the project, specifically to fund a first phase of environmental documentation and preliminary engineering. We've now reached a place where if a project is to be pursued, it appears that it will need to be driven by the city with support from EDCTC and Caltrans, which requires direction to staff on how to proceed. Direction is respectfully requested from council on how you would like to move forward. Staff's report outlines the options presented in the final action plan, as was provided in the attachment to the report. I also want to clarify that this request for direction is not a selection of an alternative, but merely a recommendation based on the input we've received in delivering the recent pilot project. The selection of an alternative comes during an environmental process. The recommended direction will allow staff to pursue funding for that environmental process to deliver a project in accordance with CEQA and NEPA as applicable. In the immediate future, the Climate Adaptation Program appears to be a viable funding source and available, and has a funding deadline at the end of this month for pursuing funding for the environmental evaluation. That environmental document will study the current alternatives cited as a do-nothing, no-build option, a temporary Trip to Green project, a permanent Trip to Green project, construction of a new elevated express lane bypassed through downtown, or implementation of a temporary Trip to Green project while engaging in the planning period for an elevated expressway. As it was daylighted during the delivery of the pilot project, we do not have any funding to continue implementing that pilot project, nor was that the intent. But the information we learned was invaluable, and the lessons related to deployment of resources, time of engagement, public outreach, and details of the project have been well documented and will be considered and respected as we move forward on this recommended direction. That concludes staff's report as we seek direction from council on this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. And yeah, this did come to us at EDCTC already. We kind of had the final sign-off, if you will, there. So I think, you know, at that, I'm trying to remember, Rebecca, did we pick a preferred model at EDCTC?
The commissioners really just kind of expressed their own personal opinion.
Yeah.
But it was a receive-and-file action.
That's right.
And the majority of, I believe actually all the commissioners, preferred the permanent Trip to Green. There was some discussion regarding around the tolling of facilities. And again, I want to reiterate that that is something that will be vetted out through the environmental document process. And by mean vetted out, I mean, will we even consider it? If we do consider it, how will we consider it? Those are all things that come a little later, but to look at that now would be putting the cart before the horse.
Understood. Thank you. My memory is not as it should be. All right, great. Any questions at this point? Okay. We'll go ahead and open up item 12.1 for public comment.
And after reading the study for the US Trip to Green analysis, I find this analysis lacks comprehensive conclusions. While it demonstrates the traffic backup without Trip to Green, it fails to analyze the congestion on other routes through Placerville that also experienced gridlock during the same times that US-50 gridlocked. Thus, it underestimates the benefits of the Trip to Green implementation. Using speed drop and increased time to travel on US-50 only, it underestimates the toll effects of the gridlock on US-50. There is no analysis of the toll connected effects, the related effects of the US-50 gridlock. It fails to show that the reason local traffic is less on this weekend is that locals know the problems and actively avoid weekend travel on US-50 and the clogged side streets in Placerville. It also fails to fully account for the effects of US backup on emergency vehicles. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Kirk Smith, I'd like to see some money spent on promoting business downtown. And I know it's difficult for you because you've got three business districts, people in Broadway, people in Placerville Drive, and they're going to feel like they're being cheated. But businesses downtown suffer from this experiment that they've found so far. And I'm not sure the data shows just which businesses account for it. I know it's difficult for you because in terms of tax, sales tax revenue, it's not that much. But face it, if people are starting to, you know, you pay a lot of money to the Chamber of Commerce to promote Placerville, so why not ask them to do it? Of course, they've got a conflict because they also represent Apple Hill, they've got people on the wine industry, and people up in South Lake Tahoe, all kinds of competing interests. But if you're going to pack up the car with hamburgers and pizza, you're not going to do it downtown in Main Street. So Placerville Drive and Broadway are going to lose. And if you need to get groceries, you're not going to get them on downtown Main Street. But it needs to promote that business, something that says historic Main Street, that gets people knowing about it early on so they can turn off on their way back. I just think that money needs to be spent because it's a heart of the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ryan Carter. For what it's worth, I remain an advocate of the Do Nothing Plan. Like Sue said, anybody that lives in Placerville knows this problem and easily avoids it every Sunday. But I did want to express my vehement opposition to tolls. Every public meeting in regards to Trip to Green, the public had vehement opposition to tolls. Even though everybody in this room would be exempt from those tolls, I still think it's a terrible idea and should not be considered as a funding source. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for more conversation. And I'll, I know John, you know, John wanted to talk about this issue for many reasons. We needed to continue this item tonight, but I think I can sum up his positions, which are no elevated express lanes, he thinks it's crazy and will never happen. And I think I'm channeling John okay here. And no tolling fees. So, you know, I wanted to make sure I got those out there for him. And I'd have to say, I'm pretty much in line kind of with that thinking as well. I do think the permanent Trip to Green is the right approach. And just to set the stage again, you know, the genesis of a lot of this was, we have residents complaining because all of their side streets were being clogged up, Clay Street, other, all of our arterial roads were being clogged up by people using their GPS and Waze and other things to try to get around Highway 50. So it wasn't just so that we could move people faster from the Bay Area back home. This was also to help alleviate all the traffic spilling onto our streets that weren't built for thousands of cars to go through on those packed weekends. So the solution is really also for a local solution as well as for a regional one. So I just wanted to kind of level set that again as well as we look at this.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, you know, there's a public safety element to that. You know, we say, oh, our streets are jammed, but there's a fire and everyone needs to get out, and there's going to be catastrophic consequences there. I'm pretty much in line with that. I think we need to go with a permanent Trip to Green. I'm not in favor of the tolling. And I agree with Kirk Smith that we need to do more to promote. Some of the businesses definitely did suffer, and we need to look, take a closer look at how we can promote those businesses and an easy in and out of town for that traffic. Thank you.
Yeah, and I thank you, Vice Mayor, because same thing. I think, and we've had those conversations internally with staff, and I think we all know that we can do better in terms of how to promote downtown and getting people here. And that will be a sort of a permanent feature, if you will, of when we do this. So, you know, whether it's 16 million and, you know, 16 million and 100,000 or whatever it might be, I mean, I think that's just going to be part of what we're doing so that we're continuing to draw people into town. I mean, I do think, you know, if your business model is predicated upon people sitting in traffic, you also should probably look at other things that you can do, because that's not a great business model. But at the same time, we also need to look at what we can do so that we're not just having people completely bypass, you know, downtown. I mean, that was always the worry in the early days, which is why we have the stoplights that we do and why we didn't back in the 1980s, you know, actually have an overpass or an underpass or something else. So, you know, those things have happened, they're still here, but things have also changed in the last 40 years. So there has to be that balance, but, you know, to Mr. Smith's comments, we do take that at the heart and know that we're going to really try to, you know, I think we've improved a little bit every time we did this, but there's always room to do more. So we will take that into consideration as we go forward as well.
Yeah. So I would also say I'm in favor of, you know, trying to pursue funding to do a permanent Trip to Green. I think if we can get funding, there's a lot of details we're going to need to work out down the road. And I also have a lot of concerns about tolling. If we went that route, how it would work, and I don't think it's a great idea. I think it motivates people to get off of Highway 50, which is the problem we're trying to solve. But, and similarly, I think, you know, appearance of it, you know, I think we want something that would meet with our town. I think we want to make sure that people would still come to Main Street. So I think there's a lot of details, but we're kind of not at that step right now.
Agreed with all of that. All right, David?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I agree with everybody on the no tolls and the no overpass and all that stuff. I think we got a lot of time before we're ever going to have a permanent Trip to Green anyway. We got a lot of studying that needs to be done first. So I'm definitely in agreement with getting some sort of study done to see what it's going to take. I mean, I'm not quite sure where the 16 million dollars came from, if that's just something we're pulling out of a hat or a possible estimate. But, you know, a study would be good. I am definitely in agreement with Kirk that we need, regardless of whether we do Trip to Green, why don't we have a big, huge, giant sign on Highway 50 that says Historic Main Street, Placerville? You know, bringing more people, even whether they're stuck in traffic or not, into our downtown, whether it's Broadway, Placerville Drive, or Main Street itself, we need to be doing that anyway, just to increase the tax revenue for ourselves and will give us, you know, a better general fund to do things that we need to do. So, yeah, I mean, getting a study done... So, yeah, I mean, getting a study done, that makes sense. Whether it's not, we're going to be able to pull it off, that's the big question.
Well, thank you. And in terms of 16 million is like budget dust for the, for the state. So I think we will vigorously, you know, pursue all, all funding sources. I have great faith in Rebecca as well as EDC TC to, to come up with those funds, as well as our own personal efforts and SAGHOG and a lot of other areas that, you know, have looked at this to try to come up with that funding as we go forward. You know, this really is a regional issue in addition to, I mean, it, it packs us the most because it's right in our, our city and it divides us in half. But is, this is also a regional issue and I think people also realize that from other governing bodies too. So I think there's more help out there. And I think you're finally seeing a little bit of impetus behind it, whereas it's always been sort of a conversation. But, you know, I think we're finally seeing some push. And so I, I think we're moving in the right direction, at least from that, from that perspective.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So the first application, if we do get approval or recommendation to pursue a project, the first application we would submit would be for the climate adaptation program. And it would only be for the environmental document preliminary engineering phase, which helps us actually develop a project that our community is willing to support. So it's not the 16 million, which is the current estimate for a permanent trip to green, but it is starting that process. And that's how we deliver majority of our CIP larger projects too. Is it just, it starts with a concept and then we, you know, breathe life into that concept through community input, through cultural studies, through a whole host of avenues. And ultimately out of that concept, then it leads us to construction.
Great, thank you Rebecca for that clarification.
Yeah.
That's helpful. Okay, so I think I'm, I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing a consensus here around, which would be what? Option three. For us to pursue as a policy goal. If that's the case, so just to clarify, so we need to, we need to vote on and actually adopt, like picking a? Or do we just, can we just give direction on this one?
Direction is adequate, you know, just providing direction to staff to pursue a project with potentially looking at a permanent trip to green option.
Okay, Mona, are you good with that? Okay, cool. All right, so we're all good with, with that option then? Anything else to, anyone wants to add? All right, Rebecca, go get that funding. All right, thank you, and thank you for all the public testimony tonight as well. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to actually, let me, let's take a five minute break. We'll reconvene at about, at seven o'clock. All right, everybody, if we could rejoin, we're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so we are on item 12.2. And that is to consider awarding a construction contract and a consulting services contract for construction inspection and construction engineering services for the Hawking Street sewer line replacement project. And Rebecca has this for us as well.
Thank you again. So the item before you is to award the construction contract to CE Cox General Engineering in the amount of $415,072. And then also approving an inspection and construction engineering services contract with Dewberry for $52,426 and 12 cents. Along with the, also the appropriate Measure HL funding appropriations for the project per staff's report. This project that we're discussing is located on Hawking Street. It serves around 17 residents and it's replacement of a failing sewer line that's made of a combination of transite and orangeberg pipe. And a project exhibited is attached to staff's report for identifying the location reference. The sewer main has reached the end of its useful service life and is considered a priority for the city due to the poor conditions, prior overflows and failures, ongoing excessive maintenance and continuing deterioration, all of which have had to been addressed by our amazing Public Works Department. And we like to thank them for their continued service and their efforts on that. On April 25th, 2023, council authorized the advertisement of the bid documents for public bidding. The public bids were opened on May 18th and the city received one bid from CE Cox General Engineering. This happens to be a contractor we have worked previously with on other phases in that area, as well as Mosquito Road. They have done a great job and their references and experiences with the city have been very positive. In, in addition to that, city staff will administer construction management in the role of resident engineer due to the specialized, but due to the specialized nature. We are seeking assistance in terms of halftime construction inspections and engineering services related to the sewer pipe bursting operations. So that is the need for the consulting contract that's before you this evening. The amount that is represented in Dewberry's contract represents 12% the cost of construction, whereas construction management costs typically range anywhere from 15 to 20% and we're seeing on average 18%. So there is a savings to the city with staff's administration. Should these items be approved, construction is anticipated to start at the beginning of August. And that concludes my report. Simple and sweet, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
All right, thank you Ms. Neves. Any questions? Comments?
No, we've looked at this a few times.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up this item for any public comment.
Sue Rodman, Major Allen. This has been a long time coming and really needs to be done. The city needs to get rid of all this orangeberg pipe. And failed sewer lines are not something we want to see in our future. So this is a break. I would urge you to vote yes on it. This is one that the committee has looked at more than once and said, yes, this needs to stay up there in high priority once we get it up.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on this item? See none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. I, I will say, you know, Orangeburg was never supposed to last so long, but it, it did a hell of a job for as long as it's gone. I mean, it should never have lasted as, as long as it did. It just, you know, it's, it's time for it to come out. Okay, any, any comments? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I motion that we consider staff recommendation on 12.2.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, we have a first and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Gopur.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye. All right, thank you Regina. Okay, great. We will move to item 12.3. And that is to consider ratifying contract change orders, one through five, for the Placerville Station 2 Phase 1 project. And Rebecca has this again for us.
Thank you again. So the item before you is to address the Placerville Station project, which is currently under construction. It's moving along quite well. We do have some change orders that have come from unforeseen discoveries and conditions in the field, as well as, you know, just general construction activities and improvements to the project scope and also not previously identified on the plans and specs. The total project contingency that we outlined when we awarded the contract to Verkamp was, which occurred on October 11th, was a contingency value of $137,000. If council should choose to ratify these construction change orders, that would result in a remaining contingency of $65,148 with very little left in terms of time to finish the project. We were in good shape, basically. So as far as the change orders go, they are summarized in detail in staff's report. But if you have any questions specifically to a change order, I'm happy to answer that. Construction began on April 24th. I'm pleased to report back that we are paving the parking lot tomorrow. And we have ramp closures on Mosquito Road for both the on-ramp and the off-ramp, scheduled for Thursday evening where that area will be paved, as well as the final lift on Mosquito Road to allow it to be completed by Friday morning. And the entire site opened up and clear for traffic for this upcoming holiday weekend. That concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you Rebecca. Any questions? Comments? All right, we'll go ahead and open up for a public comment.
Sue Rodman, again. The Placerville Station has been an ongoing project for quite a while. It's really starting to take shape. So this is, this is great. And you don't, you haven't even used all of the contingency. And this was a project that had several things that were discovered after you got started, like in terms of sewer water utilities, getting PG&E to cooperate, getting AT&amp;T to cooperate. I think our engineering department is kind of speculating their job to get all of those, especially PG&E cooperate. And so I think this is great.
Thank you. All right, see no other public comments, we'll bring it back to council. Any other, I will say, yeah, it's nice to, to see the end of the, end of the line here on this one because we've, this has gone through a lot and just sue's comments. I mean, we had a lot of utility delays on this project. And unfortunately, we aren't the masters of our own future sometimes when we have to deal with other folks on these to get everything done. So it's nice to see it finally all come together. So with that, if no other comments, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we ratify the change order per the staff report.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second roll call, please.
Councilmember Gopur.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye. All right, thank you Rebecca. Okay, we are to our last action item of the evening. And that is item 12.4. And that's consider sending a letter to the California Department of Public Health requesting they deny the 2023 reauthorization of the Sierra Harm Reduction Coalition Services for surrender change, for surrender exchange program in Eldorado County and in the city of Placerville. And Mr. Morris has this item for us this evening.
Thank you Mayor and Council. On June 20th of this year, so last week, the Board of Supervisors took action on this to recommend against the reauthorization of these services. Prior to that, myself, Chief Ren and Mayor Saragosa met with county officials who requested that the city consider supporting that action also. And to go back a little bit further, I want to read quickly, and this is in your staff report, but it's in the presentation that went to the County Board of Supervisors. Talks about what the, the goals are of Sierra Harm Reduction. I wanted to first start with those and read those. First is improving quality of life by reducing consequences of drug use. Practical strategies and ideas aimed at reducing negative consequences associated with drug use. Believe in the safety of our community, improve the life circumstances for those who are using addictive or addicted to drugs. Building a high, highly networked collaboration of service providers. And they list several issues there, training, delivery services, health testing, drug use supplies and, and safe sex items and wound care. With that said, the, as I mentioned, the county did a presentation and presented some data to us and some information that they felt was in conflict and, and did not support the idea of providing this service in Eldorado County. And we went back and I also reviewed with our police chief Joe Ren after we reviewed this information and we felt that we needed to bring something forward to the council for consideration along these lines. Each year, the California Department of Public Health has the authority to approve or deny authorization for organizations such as Sierra Harm Reduction to operate in counties in the state. And as mentioned, each year, this reauthorization is reconsidered. Currently, the reauthorization will come, will be either approved or denied and the contract goes up in September of this year. So that's why we are bringing for this for you this time, to give you the opportunity to take a position on this if you desire. And if so, send a letter to the state stating what that position is. We feel based on the information that was provided, that although these are good goals that Sierra Harm Reduction has, we do not feel that it is as big an issue here in the county and that, that some of the negatives that are, that we're seeing from that are more of a concern than the benefits that are provided. And our police chief can, can outline some of those if you would like going forward. The details are in the staff report and in the letter talking about what we feel our concerns are in this area. And that is that there's been instances that, that seem to indicate from our, from the data and the, and the cases that have been presented that the results of providing the syringes and et cetera, although they may have some benefit in certain circumstances, there are also negatives to those that perhaps are promoting or allowing the, the drug abuse to continue. So that's where our concerns are. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you. Let I say the mayor, you were in the, the meeting with us and also Chief Ren. If there's additional items, your questions you have, we're happy to try and answer those for you.
Thank you Cleve. Joe or Chief, do you want to add anything else at this point?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. You know, harm reduction is not going to go away in Eldorado County. There are still entities that provide that function. We're just specifically talking about the manner in which this one group went about distributing these, these items to the community. Harm reduction still occurs through Marshall Hospital and the Public Health Department. It's not going away, that's, I know there were some concerns on both sides, those that were hardcore against it and those that were hardcore for it. The reality is, is my belief that having that touch point through the hospital or through the Public Health Department is going to achieve the goal of providing that care that harm reduction programs are going to, you know, open up your trunk of side of the road and pass down these stuff.
Thank you Chief. Yeah, I think from my perspective, since I was, I was at the meeting with the county, I just, I mean, my thought is I have not seen a program, how I want to say this. I have not seen the success, if you will. There's success at the micro level. At the macro level, I have not seen a, a public success story, if you will, on, on this type of project. To me, and I'll, I guess the best way for me to maybe make that point is there's a picture here and, well, it's like, you know, I, I think this was the old homeless camp up on, you know, on, on Upper Broadway. I think that's what a picture of this is. But, and this goes to me, I mean, this is a, a bigger issue beyond just needle exchange, but also the, the real feasibility of can you actually get clean when you go to say AA for a couple of hours and then you return back to a tent community with a bunch of other people that are constantly doing drugs, that are, have alcohol abuse, that have mental health problems? I mean, I, I think it's a bit of a, and I, and I, it's sort of a charged word, but a bit of a fantasy to think that you're going to go to AA or NA and then return to a homeless camp environment and somehow get better. There are certainly micro examples of that, but we have never seen a macro example of any municipality area that has had a considerable turnaround. If anything, all we've seen are an increase in homelessness and really not much to show for it. So to me, this is an extension of that. I feel really strongly about it, that this is not a way to get people healthier or safer. There are options that we have in the county for people that truly want to do that. And I think it's a really big step for people that want to actually go out and try to get better. And if going into a county facility or to the hospital is that step, then I think that's going to be a much more meaningful way to get something done. So that was where I was coming from on this and why I felt it was important to be part of what the county... of what the county had passed and what the sheriff had also been a partner on. So those are my thoughts on it, you know, as we go forward here. And then I'll open it up for the rest of our colleagues.
I'll go ahead and talk on this. So I think for me, a lot of this concerns are not really understanding the public health side. And I did watch the county meetings, we obviously don't have a public health officer here at the city. Trying to understand that side as well, I totally understand law enforcement's concerns. One of the things that I know Sierra Harm Reduction is providing easy access to Narcan, which I do think is important, and I think a pathway that doesn't require going to the hospital to get it is important. So I don't know what that pathway would be if we don't have some sort of program, doesn't have to be Sierra Harm Reduction in my mind, but some sort of program that is doing that. The other thing is, my understanding is about 50% of the population that they serve is housed. And so I'm a little bit worried about, are we losing a pathway to those people? I mean, I think our law enforcement has a pathway to the housed population, and I think EDOK, I think there's a lot of pathways, or the unhoused, sorry. The unhoused population, I think there's a lot of pathways to, and I agree with that. But I don't know, you know, if we don't have a program like this in place, do we lose the folks that are housed, which is about 50% of the population per Sierra Harm Reduction's numbers? And then I think some other thoughts is, I mean, I did look at the hepatitis C rates from 2014 through 2019, they were increasing. Sierra Harm Reduction started operating in 2019, and they're now down about 20% from where they were in 2019. So, you know, are we going to see increases in hepatitis C rates in our community? I think HIV, we don't have a huge problem with, and probably the rates would be okay there, looking at the numbers, but the Hep C numbers are concerning to me. And I don't, you know, I, yeah. So those are my thoughts. I kind of feel like I don't have enough information to feel like I could support them or, you know, be in opposition to them. And I don't feel like we're providing any additional information to the state that the county has not already provided. So I kind of, I'll just leave it there, I'll let folks talk, but that's sort of where I'm coming on this issue.
Thank you council member, any other comments on this item? All right, we will go ahead and open up item 12.4 for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would just like to mention that there were two items of written communication received. Copies of those emails are on the back table for the public.
Thank you Regina.
Rodman, Plasterville resident. If Sierra Harm Reduction is really not reducing harm, then we don't need it. But the letter that I read looks like it was just basically a copy of what the county already said. So, other than sending them a short note to say we support the county, I don't see any reason to go into and repeat the things that the county said. What we need is some of our own analysis. What does our hospital have to say? Did anybody reach out to Marshall Hospital and ask them what they thought? Did anybody, I mean, our police department certainly should have some input for this too. But, other than the, I think we do need some pathway for people to get Narcan if they need it. But as far as just needle exchanges, I'm sorry, but I don't think that just being able to get free needles anytime you want them does anything to help you get over being addicted to drugs. So, again, I don't think there is enough information here to really make a recommendation. But if we're going to make a recommendation, it needs to be based on what our local people have to say about it. What does Marshall Hospital have to say? Quote, "our own police department," and not just parrot back to the county what they already said.
Thank you.
Leo Bennett-Kochan. I didn't think I'd be here. Thanks Regina, I emailed my letter driving to Carson City and emailed the High Points driving back. Left there at five, great visit with family. My wife wanted to stop at Tahoe. Fortunately, she got a headache, and I want to thank you guys. Live stream kept me focused driving down the freeway. We're all different, I don't fall asleep during meetings, they're fun. So I'm going to state that this isn't a fantasy, Mayor Saragosa. I've spent 50 years, 20 full-time, 30 part-time, in harm reduction. The overlap, as was stated, is in the homeless population, addiction and mental health, but you also have an unhoused population. Mine is primarily the addiction, mental health, and unhoused. Mine was primarily alcohol. And it's not a fantasy. When you deal with folks that are seriously addicted and they die, most of them die prematurely. As the chief pointed out, and also the council, we need multiple pathways, multiple touches. Marshall has a great program, so does the county. The county did needle exchanges in 2018. The difference is, those are static, you have to go to them. The state adopted a 30-year evidence-based approach, which is one leg, only one, and it includes the needle exchanges to lower infectious disease and create touch points. They distributed 90,000 and got 100,000 back. So they do take needles off the street. When I've observed them, they don't pop open a trunk and just hand them out. They're in bags with the Narcan. They expect and encourage use needles back, and that's a touch point. It's a moment where they know somebody cares. That was our harm reduction, we fed and housed. Other folks say we enabled those addicts, which came from all walks of life in San Jose. PhD engineers, it's a sickness. And we need everybody working together. The police department has their approach, Marshall, the county. I've met Sierra Harm Reduction, too, Tom and Eric, wonderful people that are building that contact. And clean syringes do make a difference. Yes, people put heroin in them. Well, and yes, there's syringes everywhere. Well, when we did it in San Jose, there were bottles everywhere, you know? I mean, it's just, you're meeting people where they're at until they're ready to take the next step. And they saved 309 lives, and we lost 170. They make a difference. And the state understands, county, cities don't want to do this. That's why they implemented it this way. I urge you to collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ryan Carter. I just want to voice my support for the letter. I think it's a great accompaniment to the county's letter to the state. And the presentation done by the county sheriff was very enlightening, especially that the preloaded needles utilizing these Sierra Harm Reduction needles, you know, they're getting them from Sierra Harm Reduction, they're loading them with heroin, and then selling them directly to people. This is not saving lives, in my opinion. And so I would just like to voice my support for the letter as written, I think it's great, and I think we should support our law enforcement in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to add, my name is Jacob Rigoli, just speaking personally as a resident, and stepping into the conversation sort of midstream clearly, but I think we do want to separate the health concerns as a society from maybe some moral concerns that we have related to the usage of drugs in general and the harm that that absolutely can cause. But I think we are diminishing and distracted from the health benefits that we do, that accrue to us as a society, from recognizing frankly that the usage of drugs in general is going to continue despite our best efforts as a society. That is not an excuse to not look at ways to prevent that. However, we do need to recognize that that, of course, those activities will always occur. What can we do, therefore, to prevent reuse of needles, which do transmit diseases, right, and do cause external harms, externalities, that we do as a society end up paying for, and a lot? So I think it was mentioned from the council a little earlier, right, that there is some evidence of a reduction, for example, in some transmissible diseases, which do cost the city, the county, quite a lot, no doubt, in terms of healthcare. So I do think we want to recognize that there is harm being done through this action if we were no longer, for example, to continue programs like this. There is actually an externality and a substantial harm that may accrue to us as a society as well. So I'm not in support, therefore, of sending this letter.
Thank you. Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I have a question for the chief. Couple of concerns about Narcan not being available. Is Narcan not available?
It's available. Public health will distribute it. All of our officers have it. We've dosed people who are in the middle of it, and all of those. So it's out there. I support Sierra Harm Reduction, pass it on, fentanyl, or Narcan. Narcan, but we're trading, we're really trading one problem for another, and the problem that we're facing now is more significant than the risk of hepatitis, which none of their numbers can state, were transmitted through the use of syringes. So we're just taking a guess. But what I can tell you is people die in the parking lots of parks from shooting up fentanyl. So I've never had anybody die in a park from hepatitis. We're trading one problem for a more significant one.
You can also get Narcan at any of the pharmacies as well. You can...
It's available.
Okay, thank you very much. Obviously, it's a difficult issue. You know, I think we're charged with considering the whole community and the whole picture and not just one group. You know, I've heard people state that the homeless are the most vulnerable, and I would disagree with that. I think our children are the most vulnerable. And we're having all these needles and these problems on our streets where we let children go, and I struggle with that. You know, I wonder, are we, when we have this exchange problem, do we, a program, do we have more needles on the street? Are people being less responsible in recycling them? Because as someone who visits our trails and our parks quite often, I've picked up more than my share of needles out there. And I think if I could have picked it up, so could any kid coming through, down on a skateboard, any age group. It's very concerning to me. That's what I have to say for now.
Any other, David, anything? All right. So I think from my pers, again, I'll just go back, I mean, I've been involved in public policy for close to, getting closer to 30 years now, and I have yet to see something work in the public sphere in this realm or in, on the homeless side, that has really put a dent in something that I can say, wow, that really works. We should adopt that here ourselves. Because I would, I would do it in a heartbeat, and say, wow, that is a great program, it's reduced needles use, it's reduced a significant amount of drug use. I've not seen that, just like I've not seen anyone reduce their homeless population in any significant matter, because until we actually deal with the mental health problems of it, and while we close all of our DMHC facilities, we're never going to solve this by giving people a little bit of advice on the streets for a couple of hours a day, and then they go back to their tents, or their sleeping bags, or anything else, and think that we're actually going to solve this issue. Because these things are hand in hand. So I'm not in favor of this still. I very much support the letter from the county. I think this was done in the vein of supporting the county's effort from the city, from the one city on the western slope within the county, Plasterville and the county C. So I think that's why the letter was a little bit more generic, if you will, as opposed to very specific numbers, because we don't have a public health officer. So it would have been a lot harder for us to come up with, you know, a lot of statistics specific just to the city of Plasterville. But we certainly have a lot of anecdotal information from our police chief when it comes to just needles out in the streets. So I will take the, do we have any other comments, I guess? That's...
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Jackie on the biggest point of it, is that, I mean, we can't look at it as just one group, we got to look at it as a whole community. And, I mean, it's all around us, I mean, even in Sacramento, even in Folsom, you go down to San Francisco, these programs, yes, they're doing the best they can to help, but they're also causing another problem, is what the chief says, is, you know, now all of a sudden we have more needles on the streets, so which gives more access. Unfortunately, you know, the addicted, they're addicted, so they don't make great decisions. And so at that point, you know, I mean, they're going after more of, they try and cheat the system, basically. So if we end up with more needles on the streets, then yeah, now we have our kids that are at risk, or we have our seniors that are at risk, or, you know, anybody that's on the streets that tries to be a good citizen and pick one of these things up. And, I mean, I was a certified EMT for over a dozen years. I mean, a needle stick is nothing to, you know, take lightly. So it just exposes too much of our general public to dangers that they shouldn't be exposed to anyway. So we can keep less needles on the street, we're better off. Not that Sierra Harm Reduction is not doing a good job, and they're doing their best. Unfortunately, I also agree with Nicole, I just don't think there's enough information here also. I would love to invite Sierra Harm Reduction here to come try and change our minds and, you know, give us a program that says, you know, this really does make a difference. So at this point, I'm for the letter and supporting the county.
Okay. Yeah, if anyone wants to entertain a motion?
Yeah, I motion to approve the support for the letter with the county from the city on item 12.4.
I'll second that motion, and as you say, I encourage Sierra Harm to look at this problem, come up with solutions, and, you know, help work with us.
Okay. Any, Nicole, you want to make any comments?
We don't have any further comments.
See manager?
I was going to say, on the letter, there is one section that talks about unanimous support, so I'm suspecting that we may not have unanimous support, so...
You do not have unanimous support.
We would need to change that letter, I just...
Support, yeah.
That could be part of your motion.
Okay, so, motion to make it majority support instead of unanimous.
And I'll amend my second.
Okay, with that then, no further comments, roll call please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
No.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Neal?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Motion passes, read one, one and one.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for all the comments this evening, I appreciate it. We will move on to item 13, which are council reports from other agency meetings. And our first is Eldorado County Transit Authority.
We meet the first Thursday, so we haven't met since the last meeting.
All right, Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
Same thing, we meet the first Thursday, so we haven't met since the last meeting.
All right, Lafco, Nicole?
We meet tomorrow, and the MSR for Plasterville is not on this meeting, so probably July.
July, okay, so we're still, okay, we're still in the immediate future then?
We're still in the near future from the last I heard.
Gotcha, all right.
Not the June meeting.
Gotcha, all right, to be continued, okay. SECOG, we are dark in July, however, we did have the blueprint meeting, which was the regional convening to talk about what our, you know, our long-term planning, what it's going to be for the region. And just want to thank, you know, Cleve and Rebecca for coming out. There was about 360 people at the Folsom Community Center, which was, to me, really just, I was blown away that that many people came from the six county region to talk about how we're going to look at our, you know, regionality, how we've planned for that, how we look at our GHD reductions, all those things. And, you know, we're all very different, you know, we have rural, urban, suburban within that area, and so we had some sort of gaming, if you will, tabletop games to really kind of work through what those would look like. And, you know, I thought it was a really good exercise for people that maybe aren't as familiar with other areas to think about the needs of those spaces, you know, of those places that are different than, say, downtown Sacramento versus us, or even, you know, suburban Plaster County. So I thought it was a really good first convening, we were well, council member Crecci was also there, and I thought it was... We were well, council member Corici was also there, and I thought it was just a, a really good, you know, first look at it from a wider group as we move forward and we adopt the final plan, you know, hopefully in 2025 with the legislation that we have in, in the legislature right now to extend this by a year. And that will match us up with San Joaquin County governments as well as the Bay Area. So we'll all, in our mega region, we'll be more synced, if, if you will. So that was, that was actually a really good showing, and more, a lot more to come on that. And again, I always say this, that is, regional planning isn't an option. We can say, we don't want to be there, Plaisterville, we're going to do our own thing, but there's, SECOG is our federal, you know, designated metropolitan planning organization. So if we say that, they're just going to give us, you know, what we're going to do for our region without us being at the table. So I know there's some folks that'd be like, oh, we don't want to have anything to do with this regional group, but it isn't an option. This is something that is part of our government and that we need to do and be at the table at. So just wanted to put that out there as well. And then we will be back in, we will meet again in August, and we'll be back. Pioneer?
Yeah, we met two weeks ago, and we did the same thing there as we did here, is we approved a new fiscal year budget.
Awesome. How are we looking?
Balanced.
Balanced, that's good.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good budget. There was some good reporting on there. The money coming in is very good. They are growing. The expansion ad hoc committee is working on, you know, getting more communities in, so we are actually getting a little bigger.
Great. And I know that increases our buying power.
Yeah, it, it helps increase, not only does it help increase our buying power, but it also helps us basically bring rates down a little bit more too. So hopefully with the new cities and, and communities that are coming on, we'll see a little bit more of a decrease in rates. With that being said, also, you know, energy costs across the border going up everywhere, so having the more buying power helps us at least keep where we're at safe, and then hopefully it's big enough that we can even bring it down a little bit more.
Great. Good news. Okay. Thank you, David. Fire Safe Council?
We meet the first Thursday of every month, so we haven't met since the last meeting.
All right. And we have not had a two-by-two, so Opportunity Knox, COC.
Our subcommittee on the MOU for the Temporary Navigation Center met. I was appointed chair of that subcommittee, and our next steps are to have the current draft of the MOU that they have, you know, partially worked out, sent to us on the subcommittee, as well as to provide us with all the statistics on the operations to date. So who's been referred in? Did they come from Plaisterville Police Department to HHSA? Did they come from the HOT team to HSSA? Did they come from the other folks that have seats? And where have we had open spaces or not, and sort of how that referral process has been working to date? So with all the numbers to make our decisions based on.
Great. Thank you. What's the, the working date of the Permanent Navigation Center? Is, or is there even one yet?
I think like two years, but I don't have a specific.
That sounds about right.
More specific timeframe than that.
No, their, their goal was December of '24.
Wow, that seems wildly optimistic.
Yeah, they, I know they've had some delays, but because they had another use planned for the, as you know, for the.
Yeah.
The current navigation center. So I'm not sure, I haven't heard updates on where they're at. Their goal is to have it up and running by 2024, or basically January of 2025.
And that would be a, not the sprung structure though, right? Or would it be at the sprung structure?
No, I don't think it's going to be.
It's actually a permanent brick and mortar.
It's going to be a brick and mortar building.
Yeah, they, they went away from the sprung structure and, yeah, it's going to be a permanent, permanent facility.
Yeah, we, we did approve the MOU for the construction of that facility. So, yes, it is a, going to be a brick and mortar building.
Okay, cool. All right, yeah, I mean, I hope they can meet that, that deadline, because that's coming up quickly, but we, we shall see. But I, yeah, I, whatever we can do to help make that happen would be great. Okay, thank you, Nicole. Okay, I will go ahead and open up for any public comments on item 13. All right, see, no takers. I'll go ahead and close public comment and move to item 14, which are requests for future agenda items. Actually, I think I do have one, and it would be just a, a file and report probably, and that is from the conversation that we had earlier today in regards to narrow streets and one-way streets. Could we have a report back on the streets that are on that list, and then if we need to add anything else as we contemplate our ADU and JADU? Just so that, I, I think it'll be helpful to know what streets are already there, and I think that'll, and, and I, that might daylight it for some of the, the public as well, if, if y'all don't, don't mind. And if it's, I understand if this is a big lift and it's months out still, but I just wanted to kind of put it on the radar as well, if y'all don't mind.
I'm wondering what list you're talking about.
It, it was, so there is a list of streets that.
It's actually, it's actually in our code.
It's in the code.
It's by, by ordinance adopts the, and I forget the exact, somebody mentioned it tonight, I think Ryan did, nine something. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but it's in our code. I was actually heavily involved with that when we actually added those streets at the time and did some work. The caution I want to throw out there is that if you, if you name those streets, or one you name, you've got to put a sign up, you've got to be willing to enforce and et cetera. And so there's a lot of work that it can add if you, when you decide to do that. Not to say that we shouldn't, but.
Well, I, I know we added some, and we still haven't added the signs yet.
I know, I know. Yeah, it's a big process, so.
And I, and I understand that, and I think even under that understanding that we may not get a sign up in a year or, or maybe even two years, that, but it's still a, the aspirational goal. And I think especially if we're going to, you know, include that as part of our, our, you know, our argument as to why we, we can't have no, no parking, then we need to have, you know, I think a good, something built out. So it, it can just be, it's not anything that I, I think we need to vote on or do, but I, I'd like to see it unless we have, you know, an action item to take back to staff. But it just sort of jogged my, my thoughts.
Rehearse that.
Yes, and staff, if you have any thoughts on that.
So primarily, you just want to see that list and then be able to discuss that and talk about maybe how we might revise that?
Yes.
We can do that, that's.
Is that horrible though?
The list is available, so.
If it's a big lift, I mean, I don't want to do an exercise in futility.
We can do a, like, that, that list, and then look at other streets to maybe potentially to add.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if y'all are okay with that.
I'm okay with it, yeah.
Okay. Nicole, are you, you all right?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. And I, again, I'm not looking for next week, so I understand the, the work product behind that. So as staff is, can gear up for it.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Anything else on this item? Okay. Okay. Item 15 then, city manager or staff reports, anything? Anybody else? No, all right. Okay. Okay, so upcoming items, I will let people read that on their own, and for the people online, go to the, go to the website, and you can find those. So at 7:50, I will adjourn this evening's meeting of the Plaisterville City Council. Thank you, everybody, for being here.